This conference will now be recorded.
All right, a very good evening, ladies and gentlemen, once again. Thank you for joining us here for our town hall in regard to the Plaza access cards. Once again, my name is Stephanie Taylor. If you joined me here for the community update, I'm back again. But thank you for joining us here today. We are going to have an open discussion regarding our Plaza access cards. This was a notice meeting, so I do want to quickly, we do have a forum right now with three board members present. And I do certify that public notice of this meeting was posted at least 48 hours in advance, in accordance with Board of Statute 720. Just a few things about this evening. We do have a PowerPoint presentation that our board members are going to go over. We do kindly ask that you please let them finish the presentation in total, and then we are going to open it for comments, questions, concerns. And we do want to do everything very organized this evening, so we do kindly ask if you do have something that you would like to contribute, either a question, a comment, or concern to the meeting. You could please raise your hand, and we will come to you with the microphone. Because a lot of times, the issue that we have at these meetings is that people online cannot hear people in the audience. And we do ask you to come forward, and that's just proven not to work in the past. So we are going to have Mitch on microphone, and he's going to be coming to you, okay? So again, if you do have a question, comment, or concern after the presentation is over, we do ask you to just raise your hand, and we will come to you, okay? With that, I am going to pass this one over to our board members. Oh, and quickly, I'm so sorry before that. I do have one more quick correction. During the quarterly update, I did make reference to our next Board of Directors meeting. I did say April 3rd. It is actually on April 8th. My apologies, but information will be going out about that. We will obviously be posting notice about that, and we'll send an e-blast out. But the next regular board meeting is on April 8th. Thank you. Do you want microphone?
No.
And project?
Project, thank you. So thank you all for coming. As you are aware, sorry? Okay, all right, so thank you for coming. As you're aware, the Plaza access cards has been a bit of a challenge for our community. If we look at how we got here, the NAR issued cards. They didn't follow exactly what was in our documents. There's been a lot where cards have been issued to people that don't qualify under the documentation. We've been trying to correct that issue. Previous couple of boards have tried to correct that issue. And so far, we haven't been able to find a path forward. So what we did was, we went with a questionnaire survey. We got a great result. Actually, it's our best results we've ever gotten from a survey. And overwhelmingly, what we learned was that people would like to figure a way to accommodate those who already have cards, as well as staying true to our documentation. Because to change our documents is a long process, and it's expensive. And what we're going to have to end up having to do is get a certain amount of votes, and people voting, and quite honestly, there's really not going to happen. So what we looked at is, okay, we have the people who currently have the cards. Then what happens to new people when they start coming in? Is it really fair that someone who was here two years ago, three years ago, eight months ago, would have access, whereas someone who is since April of 2023, when we did the initial cutoff, they get excluded? And the people that buy in '24, '25 get excluded? So we wanted to come up with something that parallels something we already tried, which is our annual pass holders with the golf. So what we're going to do is, we're going to come up with a plan, and that's the tier system that we've come up with, recognizing that there are different levels of involvement within the community. The first tier being blood related. When we start looking at your blood relation, currently you're entitled to one card. Does it really make sense when we look at a house, if it's brother, 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 sister, whatever the combination, grandmother, grandson, to exclude what? Right? So those are what we are considering the most pressing tier. So we priced it at the lowest. We do it in a...
Keep going.
We did it on an annual basis, but what we wanted to do is, we want to take the rest of 2024 to be able to resolve all these outstanding issues. We want to deal first and foremost with those who do not have a card. Then what we're going to do is, we're going to come back and clean up the ones that have the access cards. So when we look at the tiers, the tier one is the blood relation. Then we get into tier two, full-time resident, name on the deed. They're a higher level, but a little bit below blood to blood. Then when we get to the third tier, it's name on the deed, but you're not a full-time resident in the community. And then the last one is full-time resident, names not on the deed. They would be priced the highest. It's sort of a tier system that recognizes ownership, as well as your living in the community. So that way, what we can do is, we can sort of accommodate all people that we currently have, as well as providing a path for future owners. Now, we have to have it at four per house, because we do have to put some sort of threshold on this. We also recognize from our feedbacks that we've gotten at board meetings, online, and that is, we want to have a path if you have relatives down. So if you have guests coming to visit at Easter, you might have them here for a week or two weeks. You don't want to necessarily have to come up to the plaza with them if your son, daughter, whoever is visiting you. So we are providing a way for them to also be able to come to the plaza. And then that way, everybody can enjoy our facilities, because it's a great amenity. This path does not include the privileges at the golf course, right? In the future, maybe we look at that, but as at this point in time, this is strictly the Plaza amenities and the North Pool. So as we move through that, it's how do we get going forward these cards? So we now have 100 on stock or in premises. And then we have another 100 on order. These things take a long time to get, apparently. So what we would ask is, if you already have a card, wait, we'll get to you, right? Like, you're not getting turned off. We're going to live the next three months as we work through everybody else, right? It is going to be an annual program. First expiring will be December 31st, 2025. We will be subject to board approvals going forward after that. Any board can decide to do, as on this program, its choices. We are not binding them in the future at all under any mechanism. It stays true to our governing documents, and it allows us to work around, I get some clauses that what we've overwhelmingly heard, people don't agree with. So when we start looking through all of that, that is, how do we now get this distributed? And more importantly, before we get to a vote on November 8th, we want to make sure, April 8th, we want to make sure, have we missed anything? Is there something that is overwhelming that we need to reconsider? Because we want to make this as smooth, as easy, and as transparent as possible. Really, what we're looking for tonight is our one last reality check. Are we okay? And I guess that's going to be decided from the people in this room and how long it is. There you go.
Nope, I think that covers it. There's obviously the provisions and stuff.
Yeah.
The questions, no.
So we are open to questions.
Any other board members? Can I get a question?
Okay.
Okay, first off, I'm not sure if a lot of people understand exactly how this works. So our governing document states non-blood related. So if a husband and a wife buys a house, both of them can come to the plaza. If me and my brother buy a house, technically, by the way the governing documents are, only one of us get a Plaza pass, only one of us get the golf membership. I know we're not talking about golf, we're talking about Plaza. So this way, the tier one, just to let you guys know, if you buy a house with your brother, and he doesn't technically have access to the plaza, he will be able to have access to the plaza for a $15 annual cost, all right? Then you have, let's say, my name's on the deed and his name is not on the deed, but he lives with me full-time, he can still get that second card for $15. So there's a way if people are on the deed, or one person's missing off the deed. The next thing, we have a tier two. So it's for full-time residents and a name on the deed. So if we have only two people per household, technically, right now, can have Plaza cards. This will give us third and a fourth Plaza card. So if you have four people on the deed, everybody on the deed is going to be able to get the Plaza card. The third and the fourth one is going to cost $25, correct?
Yes.
All right. Then, let's say their name's on the deed, but they're not a full-time Champions Gate resident. They're not interested, and you know, they just come, you know, they do touch and goes in Champions Gate. And if their names are on the deed also, such as a business, how about the business situation?
Yeah, I mean, again, if they're owner of the LLC.
A third and a fourth card also, for the cost of $50. Now, this is my favorite tier, because I think this one's going to be a pretty big one for our community. These are the situations where your daughter or son lives at your house, and they're over the age of 21. You know, they're 27, they're 40. You may have 50-year-olds, you may have friends live with you full-time. So full-time Champions Gate residents, but name is not on the deed. As non-owners, it says they're less invested in the community, but they're tied to the owner. Only two people currently get the card. A third and a fourth card is going to be able for $75 a year. So everybody that lives inside the community is going to have an opportunity to come to the plaza and enjoy the pools, the workout, Dave's drinks, everybody's food. Like, I think it's something that, you know, this is something I would like to see happen. I know everybody's not for it. I know the Plaza staff can use, you know, a little bit more company gear during the day. But if there's something you guys do not like, let us know. This is an open forum, and we want to make sure we get this right. You know, we're not going to make everybody happy, but I think it's a great thing. Both Alan and James put this together. They're brilliant minds, trust me, they're amazing people, so I'll give the vote.
Here you go. Good question.
Okay. I did, I saw Lisa first, so we're going to go over to Lisa.
And as the board know, I'm fairly happy with this. And we've had a lot of discussions back and forth. I think it's a great idea. And it benefits bringing more people into the Plaza. That's just what I'm going to be speaking. The other thing is, it's about the families, about the people who buy properties here, brothers, sisters, cousins, grandmothers, people who we made sure that they were on the deeds, and then they didn't have the access. So kudos to the board, thank you for handling it, and thank you for coming up with something that I think is going to work.
Thank you.
Introducing yourselves.
I'm so sorry.
Could the board members introduce themselves in their role? Please.
So we have a request if our board members could please introduce themselves.
I'm James Stone, I am the director.
Alan Westerman, Chairwoman.
Terry Horn, Secretary.
Good question.
We also have John Lambert, he's our Board President. He is not present this evening.
So I guess the question would be, if we put four people in a home with cards, right? Would we increase the minimum spend for that house? If it could be using all the amenities, what you said, like, you have to generate revenue. Would we put a minimum spend if we brought up to four in a house?
So our initial question.
I think the question would be, would there be a minimum spend for four people in the house?
Yeah, it's a great idea. For two, we have $900. So if we have four, would we go up to 18?
So fair question, Scott. We had the discussion at the board level on that. What we have decided to do is, we wanted to go through balance for 24 and the first year of 2025. We want to actually see the amounts that people are spending, and whether or not that needs to be adjusted for 2026. And that will be a future board decision. But as it stands right now for our initial, is no. What we really are focused on at this point in time is cleaning up what we have as a situation where people have access or don't have access, and they could have the exact same circumstances. So our first and foremost priority is to fix that, and then we'll look at the spend afterwards.
I think revenue is important, wouldn't you say?
I would say revenue is important.
The wear and tear and everything that's going to get with the extra people using it. We need some kind of income to generate to offset that. That's what I think.
So the ones that currently have a card, theoretically, there should be no increase in their usage, because they're already here and have the card.
Right.
So really, what we're talking about is the delta of the new people.
Yeah.
And to the extent of that, we don't actually know how many people are going to be there. So until we see that, we don't have any data to support what to do. So what we wanted to do is start looking at how many those cards are, how many additional people come forward. That will give us a better base to be able to make a better decision. Right now, it's just a complete guess.
But what we're saying is, you're adding extra people to a house, right? If you go from two to four, why not increase the spend so that we can offset the wear and tear of those extra people?
So...
Anyway.
Something to consider, yep.
Can I see that real quick?
The majority of homes are still going to have two people, most likely. We don't anticipate the majority of homes using up to four Plaza cards. Just based on...
This is not, like, the next board, whoever that is, if they want to keep this going, they can keep it going. Like, this is a yearly thing. Like, we're going to have, you know, we're going to find out how many people really get cards. Is this really a big, you know, factor? Maybe we only get 20 people that actually buy extra cards, we don't know. So like you said, we really can't move forward on adding or taking things away, right? This is kind of like, you know, a free game. We're going to figure out how it goes, and then we can adjust it as we keep going, rather than year by year, so.
Excuse me. What I find is funny is, all right.
Can you repeat the question too?
Go ahead, to your mouth.
You hear me?
Yep. All right.
I'm so sorry. So the only issue that we're having is if people online still can't hear, even though we're using the microphones. So when you're using a microphone, you could really put it close to your mouth, so that it's really loud for us. Even closer.
My question is about the deed, all right? When I brought my home, my wife's a vet, so she's not on the deed, all right? So I've been there three years, but she should be included.
And she is. And right now, if it's just you and your wife in your home, even though she's not on the deed, she is still currently eligible for a Plaza card, because she's a full-time resident, and each home is eligible for up to two cards right now, according to our guidance. So your wife is able to have a Plaza card at this time, at no additional charge.
We have our next question back here.
Hello. Hi, this is great that we're trying to straighten this out. I like the idea of having to charge more for the food men if they're going to be having more people come in. So my comment is, Terry, if we have guests come, and we can do the $25 for the week? You didn't mention that. My question is, if we do do that, is that $25 for one person for the week? Or seven people, or 12 people, if we have a family coming from out of town? How does that work?
So it was generally thought of having one person. Because again, you only get guest pass if you're not accompanying that guest, that family. So like, in my case, if I went out of town, and my daughters came down from New York, and they wanted to come to the plaza, they would need to have guest pass. But as long as we're here, we can accompany them. I don't know whether you ever thought about, if there's like a family of four, would one pass suffice? Like, if my daughter or husband came down, would they get one, and then you got to accompany them? I think we'd have to think about that.
And then where are we limited? You know, like, I might have relatives staying somewhere else.
Well, you'd have to sponsor, you'd have to request them, and they should be safe to stay here. Now, we can't monitor that, so again...
How are we going to monitor?
Right. So that would be the challenge is, again, you'd like to think people act in their, you know, honest... There, because you are effectively taking money out of other people's pockets.
So the question is not so much for the restaurant, but our pool areas, top and bottom. What's the capacity of those? How many chairs do we have? What happens? Because we have a few times...
Capacity of a pool area.
Not that much.
Those are like 200, but...
Yeah, it's something like that.
So then they're monitored, correct?
Correct.
Never do it again if...
Yes, we would monitor this. And of course, at any time, the board does have the right... At any time, so if they find that the plaza is overcrowded, and they need to rethink, you know, this, that would be addressed. But as of right now, you know, the board believes in, you know, with our agreement... Company that this is not going to overrun the plaza with...
And if these guests that come in that we're paying with the deed are blah blah blah... If they do something that's not according to our rules up here, or whatever, homeowner who sponsored them is responsible. Will they be fined? Shall we put a fine system in process if the guests do something? Maybe it's a good way for our HOA to raise some money then, as well.
So also, the homeowners are responsible for their guests. An issue, it would follow the normal violation process that we have in place.
Stephanie, I'll let you call out where... Where, what hands, we see first.
So we do have a quick question online, this is while we're doing that. This one should be quick. What constitutes a full-time resident? Is it more than six months? You know, how does a snowbird know if they're a full-time resident?
Do they have a license?
It just says... Substitutes a full-time...
A driver's license, or a state-issued ID? State-issued ID.
So a full-time resident would be somebody with a state-issued ID?
How do you do that with people who are out of country?
Sorry?
Out of country.
I'm out of country, I have a driver's license. So if we have everyone, please be quiet, we do have questions going up. Thank you so much. All right, we've got our next question.
Hi, how many cards that are ineligible are out there right now? The second question is, what's the process to then do an annual fee for those cards? I guess they do.
So the whole team, if you have so far...
Right. So this takes back to when we were trying to do the audit. To do the audit is, there's nothing in our documents that compels people to answer the questions. We could send this to you, and you can ignore it. However, we do know that, say, I don't have any cards in my house, and there are six. We would know that six cards are in your house, so in three months from now, I can't remember the date off the top of my head, if you have not come in, gotten into the tier system, we will shut those cards off and force you to come in. But you have no ability to audit.
Did you have to follow us?
Just a quick one. So then, all of our cards that are current and valid will have downed? Okay.
Hi, my name is Rick, I'm an alcoholic. This is, I should begin. This is a bit of tangent, and this is where you were here kind of mentioned it. I don't care how many cards a household has, one, four, 12, last Saturday night, allegedly, 30 guests, business, lives here, 130 people. They were here, they were spending money, that was... But there were 30 people, and they came back, and... It's over, not my problem, but 30 people went in. So what if I bring in 15 guests? Would I hurt a group of 15 guests? I still have my one card, but I can leave them here. If you don't put a person on this door, and that door, and walking around checking, how many cards you issue to a household is going to have a problem? So forget the cards. People can get them all the time. When I come in, and someone comes behind me, I'm not going to stand in their face, I'm going to let them in, all right? You don't have monitoring. It does not matter to me how many cards a household legitimately has. We need monitoring of who's here and when, and what's the real purpose of having these cards? Because any system can be, if you don't give me appropriate controls, this is for naught.
Thank you, Rick.
So somebody online?
All right, thanks. Thanks for the board, they put this together. Clearly, a lot of thought's gone into it. My question is, is it a limitation? Too many, too many for them, and whoever's issued them. Giving up cards, would the two tiers would be enough? Be easier to handle?
We don't know yet. We don't know yet until it happens.
So when we decided on the tiers, FSR was in the room. They didn't have an issue with... I don't think that's a word. So I think it's a new point. So I'll hand it back to you first. I'm not working out tonight, this is my car, you guys.
So if a guest comes and, you know, wants to eat and drink, and wants to pay for it, will we have the ability to pay on their credit card? Because, I mean, obviously, the owners, they don't want to be charged on there, right? I mean, probably they're...
Yes, so the question is, if someone brings a guest, and the guest pays with their credit card, and treats the owner, et cetera?
Absolutely.
We're not declining any of your credit cards. Personally, I like...
It's outside revenue, it's new revenue.
So bring a bunch of guests, and have them use their own credit card. Again, there's no restriction on that. It's just if, as you set these tiers, or you sign in a guest, and you walk out the door, it gets... Much bigger counts. So we're just trying to make sure that we don't lose revenue, that way they can have to use their credit card.
All right, I have a follow-up question, the gentleman asked about the number of cards and stuff like that. So usually, for the pool area, it's probably okay, you know, if there's overflow, that's fine. But again, for, you know, some of the people in here who play pickleball, we only have three courts. So if we have 40 people that are standing on the courts, and, you know, how do you handle that? I mean, that's, I think we try to get the master association to put courts on the tennis side, but I think that may fail. So this is a bigger issue. Yeah, it's fine, because they're paying for it, and, you know, the plaza needs more revenue and stuff, that's great. But if there's too many people on the pickleball courts, then the people who are residents here... You know, it's not that easy, you're going to have to... I mean, a few months ago, I came down with my daughter to play, and she said that we didn't even know who these people were. So anyway, that's my comment.
Yeah, one of the concerns that we had as we talked about this policy was gym, you know, access, pool access, pickleball access, watching court, et cetera. There's no... There's no perfect solution, right? I mean, lately, especially this first, some people playing pickleball, like on off-hours are actually from the retreats. So one of the things that Stephanie talked about in her update was. And what I would almost like to see in pickleball courts is the access with the Plaza card. Not a little shitty thing, you know, you've got electricity out there, we just got to put that in. So I think that helps to mitigate some of those issues. And the other thing, a lot of these cards are already out there. So people have the access now, right? My daughter, she lived with us in 2016 to 2021. Moved to New York, but we came here and I found this special company. She just showed her license out of Plaza Access Card that. But she still has that card. But that would be one where there'd be no reason for me to ever. Anyway, she's down here, we're usually with her or we can buy a guest pass. Second, if she has a card currently that she shouldn't pass. So a lot of these people are talking about, and I think the number is probably a couple hundred, have cards already. So they're either using the facilities or they're not. And they'll probably have to change their behavior. So we don't anticipate again this to be a, you know, five hundred people to use the pool or the pickleball courts, et cetera. So it will be fairly nominal, but we want to just make sure we clear it up. We get the data so we know what we're doing going forward.
We do have a question online. How are five owners that are part of a trust treated? The wording in the document is a little confusing.
They would designate the four. So we do have a question online. How are five owners that are part of a trust treated? The wording in the document is a little confusing. So they would designate the four people who would have access to the Plaza. They would need to choose. And they would have to, they would fill out a form that we would have. Four people on the trust would have access to the Plaza.
Got a next question over here by the bar?
All right. I think it's great that you're having those people come in. But you need to get the staff. Because I've been here a few times and the staff have been just ragged, running around. You haven't got enough staffing. So if you're going to have all these, you need to get extra staff. That's what I think. Otherwise it's a waste of all these people. They won't get served.
All right, next question over here.
So I'd just like to go back to the payment issue that you had there. Where you were saying that people can use any credit card to pay if you have a guest. Historically, certainly for myself and people I know, their guests have not been allowed charged onto your account. So apparently not, but this is also, this is what I've been told. You know, a guest has tried to pay and said, I want to use your credit card. And oh, no, no, it's going to go on the account. Maybe that's just something that makes me. But here's, some people think it's one way, some people think it's another. Certainly three people I'm sitting with tonight think that the case is that we cannot charge with a credit card. It has to go onto our.
Right behind you.
Yes. Okay, we'll read that way. Turn it to the south side.
Yeah, we'll clarify that. First, I'd like to thank the board for their tireless and selfless work they do on our behalf. Thank you. I want to say that I do support tier one, two, three, four. The community, our family, relatives, everyone up here. I am concerned though about the guest pass. And I don't know what the solution to that is. As far as not having a homeowner here, I just feel like guests, whether you've got, you know, the parents and uncle, or the grandmas, grandpas, the grandkids running ragged up here without the homeowner. A little bit concerned about that. But then to break the question, who's to say I don't hand my Plaza card to grandpa to bring grandkids up here and then they get in? So I don't know what the real answer is there. I just wanted to say that I don't support that, the guest passes, just based on the wear and tear. This is all kind of our personal sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So the next one is in the back here.
Um, I want to. We have very high capacity here for, especially for dinner. And we have low capacity out here. It'd make more sense to me if you're going to have a large party that you call in, just like you do at the restaurant. You call in and say, hey, there's thirty people. They know you're coming. We need to be able to staff it, food, all of that has to be considered. Nobody should bring thirty people in here without someone knowing in advance that they're coming. How can we, how can we manage this place that? So that's got to be something that we've got to come up with a solution. And I think it's got to be placed as a priority. Because I don't want to come over here and there's a party here that, that shows up with fifteen, twenty people. And me and my wife, there's no room for us. And they might not be all owners, right? We need to really seriously think about how we can handle that. And that has to be a priority. Because everybody's human is invested in that.
Okay, this should be easy. I appreciate all the, I think this is phenomenal. And I hope they can address the guest passes very clearly. The homeowner must have put in writing to the HOA office in order to get this passed. In your house, not by.
I guess we're talking about guest passes to see. You know, military person, I give out ID cards all the time. I think that I'm responsible for the people who get them. Because I'm still responsible for them. I think we're making a problem out of problems, something that's not a problem. I mean, I, I, I'm even making a suggestion. I know our board is very talented and very smart. But we, we get away with our communities. I think we had our communities back. We can solve a lot of these things for the community. I know it's tough sometimes when dealing with meetings and things like that. I think we use and enforce the standards. I think bringing our communities back and we can get a lot of these things better. So thank you, guys.
No.
Okay. Any other comments, comments?
Question, when this is implemented, where is the rest of the money going to go for money that you're going to get from the owner? Are you going to, you know, when you're using this money? Because even when we, you know, don't use our yearly annual rest of the money, we use that money every year. So some people, you know, want to know where that money is being used. They lose it from our.
There's actually a line on the. It's not pretty, seventy-five and a hundred dollar minimum. We'd love you to come up here and eat, drink and be merry at the Plaza. But for various reasons, people don't pay money. Some people historically say. Food, whatever. A lot of us are in this similar situation. But we give that amount. So basically, there is a line that, I think it's a statement that shows the export of food credits. But basically it just is revenue. And that's part of the process and part of what we assume as we look at the overall profit loss for beverage operation here at the Plaza. So there is one of these, I think. I remember there's a access revenue line when we. So this probably go there. So again, we're not expecting this to generate tons of prices. So it's probably going to be a couple. But that will be a separate line on the income statement. That will help do all the other expenses and things like that.
We do have one question online and I think we have one in the back as well. A question online. Why does it matter if you are living here full-time or not? If all the people are on the deed, they should be entitled to the Plaza. Owners paying more for the cards. Why we penalize for not living here. At age, not living here full-time, we are actually using the amenities less but are paying more for the cards.
That's tier three. Tier three compares to tier two. That's twenty-five versus fifty.
Why are people who don't live here full-time having to pay more for the cards?
Yes, we can look at that.
Might be an issue. He's got, he's got a question. Another question.
So the board does understand your question and they are going to look into that. But at this time, they do have an answer. But they will look into that. Thank you.
Hello, folks. You can't see me. I'm too. Anyway, just something that can possibly suffer consideration. When it comes to pickleball and the gym, I'm suggesting they be treated like a golf club. Where maybe you have to be here to have on the pickleball court because there's very limited space for pickleball players. At spring break and Christmas time, I have no problem with anybody. You get a lot of younger folks coming in there, you know, they just take over the machines. And, and that's fine, as long as everybody takes around the gym or whatever. But I'd run into a problem in the gym as we have any more guests coming in. Kind of unfair for residents.
I agree with you. I'm not trying to bring up another topic, but remember about a year and a half ago, we got quotes to get rid of the putting green and put in more pickleball courts there. Okay, we're going to do it. You know, start generating revenue and that money, that, that can be a discussion. To get rid of the putting green, import more pickleball courts.
I have a question. Into the sign frame on the card, you say they expire on the, at the end of the year. First, then they have to renew them. And if they don't come in and renew them, you just. And if they wanted to, like the case they said where there's five people on the. Four people next time, they could switch at that point in the next year.
Larry, Larry.
All your questions are about the pickleball and the gym. Are you suggesting that we limit the access on some peak periods? Or was it a whole thing?
I, I, I usually run into peak periods in the gym. I don't hear. I only run into it in peak periods in the gym, which is fine. And that's cool. But here, I mean, I respect the pickleball. Together a wonderful way and opportunity that we're bringing more people in at certain periods of time to play pickleball. I think they lose their rights, you know, or not their rights, their opportunity of being a resident here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
If, if you treat it like golf, say for instance, you bring somebody in to play golf, they get a guest fee, right? But if they want to come play pickleball, they have to come. Talents daughters have to come with them, right? Rather than come in by themselves. I mean, I think just that, I mean, I could just picture. You might say ten people come in here that don't regularly play and they're just visiting.
We do have a comment online quickly. There should be a limit to the amount of guests per address. If four passes are allowed per home, why not limit the total Plaza guests to ten to sixteen per address at one time and require a reservation for anything larger? They were just throwing numbers out. I don't know.
I don't think that happens.
Well, the only wise word, comment, question. I personally think it's a mistake. There's a lot of outside credit cards that have to be able to pay a bill. It's to the card holder, the Plaza card holder. And it's up to them if they want to collect from their relatives, they collect from their relatives. I think it's a terrible bookkeeping job, people on our staff. I also think of limiting a lot of our issues. We're getting more people in here that we believe want in. That's my call.
This is a practical question.
We have one more question going.
We have, we have other two cards and we're both on the date. Do you say at some point in the near future, those cards are going to. They just continue and we don't renew them, we don't anything.
Right, we're good. No, the people that are, the people that fall into these categories are the ones that are going to get shut off when that time comes. Right, looks like that's it. Your questions are comments? Stephanie, I'll turn it back over to you. Anything else you'd love to do?
Feedback. We'll take a feedback and we'll synthesize and talk about it.
So I want to thank everyone for joining us here today. Board is going to take a lot of feedback. I could see them. Clearfully up here. But it is the intent of the board to have a final proposal approved the April eighth meeting concerning this. Okay, so thank you so much again for joining us here. This is being recorded, so this presentation will be posted on our YouTube channel. And additionally, the PowerPoint presentation that was used tonight for the quarterly update, that will be emailed out to the community as well. Thank you so much.